Morning, everybody. I'd call a meeting to order. I need approval of the tentative agenda. So move.
All second.
All in favor?
Uh, alright.
All eyes. Amanda, would you read the minutes of the previous meeting?
September twenty-second, twenty twenty-five. Chairman Rassismann called the regular meeting Liberty County Board of Supervisors to order at ninety and members. Cluse, Rassismann, Lucius and Ellis with Bosch present via Zoom. Motion by Cluse, second by Elus, to approve the tentative agenda. Motion carries. Minutes of the previous regular meeting of September fifteenth, twenty twenty-five for revenue group plans for payment. Motion by Cluse and second by Ellis to approve the proposal from Simory Corey on updating the Wright County Code of Ordinances and ordinance to with chapter three thirty-one point three oh two parentheses ten of the Iowa Code. Motion carries. Motion by Cluse and second by Ellis to approve the secondary manufacturer's participation form for the national opioid litigation and designated Amanda Meyer, Wright County Auditor, to sign. Motion carries. Motion by Cluse and second by Rassismann to accept the resignations of Ray Jean Chapman and Daryl Stephen Carlyle in the Wright County Trails Committee. Motion carries. Motion by Ellis and second by Luke to appoint Caleb Britton from Belmont and Luke Stevens from Clarion to the Wright County Trails Committee. Motion carries. Adam O'Malley, Wright County Engineer, gave an update on the secondary roads department. Cluse gave an update on the economic development director. The hiring committee interviewed two candidates. We'll be presenting them to the economic development board on Tuesday, September twenty-third. Motion by Cluse and second by Rassismann to adjourn the meeting. Motion carries.
Any additions or corrections? If not, they stand approved as read. Planings have been around. Open forum for the public input. Anyone here looking for the pipeline? Okay, we'll move on to Kylie Lang, project manager for Summit Carbon Solutions, to give an update on the project.
Morning.
Guys.
Good, how are you all?
Good.
Yeah.
Document for you guys. I'm not gonna go through all of them. The top is a presentation we'll go through.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Morning.
I'm good, how are you?
Good.
Thank you.
It's been a little bit since I've been here. I think actually you were on the board at that time. My name's Kylie Lang. I'm the Iowa Project Manager with Summit Carbon Solutions Project. With me is Mike Higgins. He's new to the project. He's our Executive Vice President of Pipeline and Operations.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So we can kick off with the PowerPoint that I just handed you guys. So a big piece of why I'm here is to update you on a new management team that Summit Carbon Solutions has been, has transitioned to this summer. Mike is a big piece of that team. Our new CEO is Joe Griffin. So he brought himself and his management team making a transition to Summit. And through the summer, it made some, some changes that we're gonna talk through, but his team, they've, they've been together previously. They've proven that they can execute projects safely. They have a lot of experience in the industry, building pipelines, building infrastructure. And what they brought, the first thing they brought when they, when they came to the company was, we need to rebuild. We need to build core values. We need to talk about our relationship with the public. How we can, not that we've done things, not that we're gonna change anything we've done in the past, but how we move forward from where we are and what that means. So I guess first I'll mention Joe, who's our new CEO, is willing, if you guys have any interest, to sit down and speak with you guys. You can communicate that through me, which is on that final page of the PowerPoint, but I'll leave my business card if you guys don't have it. Sit down, learn about his management structure, learn what he sees going forward for Summit Carbon Solutions.
Sabrina Zanora reached out to myself to set up a meeting with Joe and myself and Steve Kinkle and a couple of the landowners and I told her that I would speak to Steve and get his thoughts. And I replied to her that we were waiting until after the judicial review before we would, okay.
Yeah, yeah, I'm familiar with that. She said, I think, was it October tenth?
That's correct.
So she said she'd follow up following, following that. So, but if anyone else is interested, he's more than happy to sit down. I'm assuming Mike would attend the meeting as well and you kind of get to know them. Not that you guys are tired of me or anything, but someone who's probably better. So going out to the next phase was the vision, mission and values. This was built in collaboration with this new management team with the, the remaining Summit Carbon Solutions that are still on the project like myself. So we built the mission statement. We built a commitment to safety, a value statement, and then core values. And it's something we're gonna, we're gonna live by. We're gonna continuously, continuously communicate to you guys and how we're doing that. And the first big step in that is creating a landowner and community benefits partnership program, which you guys received an email, I think it maybe was two weeks ago. And it gave you a link to the full document and then a link to a summary page. I also printed those out for you guys. So you have the full document and you have the summary page. That would have been emailed to you guys if you missed it. I know you weren't familiar with Joe Griffin, so I've heard a couple supervisors deleted it thinking it was spam. So printed it out for you guys. I wanna talk through some of the big pieces, but I also want you guys to know, I'm talking through kind of the, the highlights here. Reading the whole document's pretty good. There's things that aren't often discussed, but are important. You know, tribal, water, union partnership. It's all built into this document and it's all kind of a rollout of what we're wanting this project to look like going forward. So it's more than these four talking points that I'm gonna have today. If you have time, it's a great document to read, but I do wanna go through these. So the first one is, is talking about the affected landowners on the project and their easement options. So previously, we were paying, making an upfront payment to the landowners. We had heard that other people wanted different options. So now we have three options for landowners. First one still remains an upfront payment. The second one is an annual payment. So some people, for tax reasons, wanted to spread their payments out. So if you wanted it spread out over five or 10 years, that's now an option when you sign an easement with Summit Carbon. And then the third option, which is a little bit unique, is actually linked to the financial distribution of Summit Carbon Solutions. So people wanted to be more than, you know, we get a one-time payment, then we don't have anything else tied to us on the project. So Summit Carbon Solutions is founded through an equity, equity build where we raised funds that we've been having over the last several years to get to this point. If they have an interest, they can take their easement payment and put it into the equity fund, although slightly different than a standard equity investment and get the distribution similar to what the equity investors would have received from that, that first round of equity. So now, when you go, we go out and talk to landowners, they have those three options and they can take whichever they choose. Another piece that we did there, and this is completely separate. It doesn't matter which of the three options you took on the easement payment. After we go into operations, we are gonna have an annual payment to the landowners that is separate. The annual payment starts at twenty-five cents per foot of pipeline on their property. And then it increases as we increase acquisition, voluntary acquisition, all the way up to fifty cents per foot of pipe on the property. So when we hit eighty cents, a little bit hard, it's point three one two five cents. And this is all in the document, per foot of pipe. And then when we get to ninety percent, it's point four three seven five. And then one hundred is that fifty cents per foot. And that's annual for the life that the pipeline operates, that they'll, they'll receive that separate from their easement. So that's something new that rolled out with this community benefits agreement. Another thing that rolled out is when we go to do survey on the property, we'll follow the, you know, required notification and give a seventy-two hour notice or whatever the statutory requirement is, if it ends up being different. And then we will give a one-time five hundred dollar payment for survey on property. For emergency responders, we, we rolled part of this out previously, but it's fifty thousand dollars per county plus an additional thousand dollars per mile of pipe in that county that will go to the first response or the emergency manager at least a hundred and eighty days before we go into operations. This is above and beyond any equipment that we are required to purchase and equip based on our permit and other discussions that we've had. So you guys have about forty-six miles of pipe in your county, so that's gonna be, what? Ninety-six thousand dollars to the emergency manager, at least a hundred and eighty days before we go into operations. So that can be used, there, there's no guidelines on what that can be used for. If they wanna use it for CO2-related additional spending on top of what we've already done. Or if they wanna use it for something completely different, that's, that's just up to them. It's just into their fund. Then the last piece I wanna hit on is the counties. We talked about this a lot. We have the taxes you guys are aware of. I think it's over three million anticipated annually in Wright County. On top of that, similar to the annual payment to the landowner, we're gonna do an annual payment to the county. So that starts at point one two five cents per foot and increases to twenty-five cents per foot based on acquisition. What's a little bit different is the acquisition for the landowner is based on the project. The acquisition for the county is based on the county. So you, your numbers tie only to your county. The landowner, it's for project. So just a little bit, little bit different, but, but same process. It scales, the county one scales from point one two five cents per foot to twenty-five cents per foot. Do you guys have any, any questions? I don't know if you're familiar. We looked at this in advance at all. Have any questions?
So a lot of this is what was mailed out because we just received a packet. Yeah, right? So that's what's.
Yeah, okay, yeah. So the next page, it's just a list of open houses that we're hosting in November. This is gonna be another situation to meet the team. Mike will be there. Our CEO Joe will be there. Several other members of the team, as well as myself, other members of the Summit Carbon Team you might be familiar with. Sabrina will be, be there. So we'll have a decent team for anyone who's interested in coming out. It's open to the public. We have several kind of around the area of your guys' county. I think November eleventh and, and twelfth are gonna end up being your guys' best options, maybe even the thirteenth, if you wanna go Fort Dodge. But I think it'd be a, a good time if you have questions and you don't wanna do an individual meeting. So that was about the update I had for you guys that I wanna take. Oh, I actually left out one of the most important parts, our one-point amendment. So two weeks ago, we submitted to the IUC to amend our one-point oh permit. Several reasons behind the amendment. One is we added a plant in Dennison. The Andersons, it was already built into our line, so we're not actually adding any pipe or running any pipe on public property that we have to run the pipe to the Andersons plant. That's it. But that was added to the permit. We made this, some minor changes around railroads, things like that, because regulation has just changed a little bit in the last couple of years and we had to redesign drills. So you'll see minor changes there. And then the biggest change is we increased the pipe going into Nebraska. That will give us flexibility. We still have what's considered the main line going into South Dakota and now a similar sized pipe going into Nebraska, which gives us flexibility to use one option, both options, to transport the CO2 out of Iowa into an area that it can be utilized, that has sequestration capabilities. We're looking at an area called the DJ Basin. That's a little further out west. And this will give us just flexibility to, to move more carbon, to use the pipeline and, and honor the agreements that we have with ethanol plants here in Iowa to move their carbon. So that was the, the biggest pieces. In Wright County, we did also have a pipe size change. That's the only additional pipe size change. It was just one of your legs went from eight inch to twelve inch. The reason behind that, we've actually known that one was gonna take place for a long time when we added the, what we call permit two-point oh. The additional plants, the Valero Fort Dodge and the Poet Gallery plant over in Webster County. We initially, when we designed the hydraulics of the system, we built the system to be able to handle Poet and Valero. But our route would have taken us up and around Fort Dodge and tied in at Corn LP. And we made the decision to go straight down and tie in in Webster County, which just means we needed to increase that, that piece of pipe between where we tied in and Corn LP, which affects a little bit in, in Wright County. So that, that was the reason behind that. Most, the large majority of the easements were signed for twelve inch pipe. A couple of them need changed. So it's not, it's not a major change on that front, but it has nothing to do with other than where we decided to tie in and we added Poet Gallery and Valero Fort Dodge rather than circling Fort Dodge. We, we tied straight in.
I think you missed one of the amendments at least, was you asked for the conditions to be changed, because one of the conditions that your permit was on was that you had permission to go through South Dakota. You skipped over that amendment.
Yep, so we, we were asking for a change of, instead of specifically saying South Dakota, we have a viable route to a sequestration site. If that be South Dakota or if that be Nebraska, we still have a viable location for the CO2, just less specific on which state.
One of the things you brought up was hydrology and the water use. Was just wondering, will you be recycling water or is it a one-time use? Or, or do you not know how the water plays into the making the carbon? Capturing the carbon?
Two, two things there. The hydraulics is the, the movement of the pipe. There will be no water in the pipe. That'll be pure CO2. It's completely dehydrated. There's no water in the pipe. The water that is used, that's for cooling at the ethanol plants at the capture facilities. So we use water to cool the equipment.
Oh, gotcha.
So the water is in the partnership program, a, a brief discussion that will, you know, use water responsibly. There is the ability to recycle. Obviously, some is lost in heating process to evaporation, but there is a recycle capability. We're also looking at ways to reduce our water footprint, although it's still in early stages. We're looking at potential intercoating and other options to reduce the water footprint. So that's, that's in the works right now. But yes, you can, you can recycle it very similar to how the ethanol plants use their water for cooling today.
The other question I get a lot is when you capturing your sequestration on the CO2 and who monitors how many? Is it, it goes by tons? Tons of CO2? Is it like eighty-five dollars per ton of CO2 that you capture? Is that how that is? Who, who monitors how much is being taken out of the air and being sequestered wherever it may be?
Yeah, so the system will monitor what goes in at the ethanol plant. And the system is capable of monitoring what comes out at the sequestration site or the endpoint of the pipeline. In terms of what enters, we'll work with the ethanol plant to verify the accuracy. We have different tools that can, can run diagnostics to verify the accuracy. We also can check if point A and point B match, so we know what went in. Is he, is, you know, has made it to this point on the system, has made it to the end of the system. And then at the endpoint, the regulators that manage the class six permits, sequestration permits that we're required to get, they'll also have a piece in regulating to verify the accuracy and what's actually being placed into.
So essentially, federal government is the one that will be at the end there, doing verification? Or is it a private entity?
At the end, it'll be the federal government because of the tax credit. So we've.
But you're just reporting man.
Yes.
With the ability for them to audit.
Main things is that water is a very big concern, groundwater.
Yep. Yep, and that's something we're, we're looking into quite a bit now as we're looking into the design of the capture facilities with the new management team and our ability to reduce total water usage, recycle water and just use it responsibly.
With the new management team on board, have you thought about asking for an amendment where you do not ask to use eminent domain?
I don't think there's a situation where we can completely eliminate. But I think this management team has made it very clear that their goal is one hundred percent, that they're gonna roll out and work with the public to get to that one hundred percent. It's gonna be a renewed focus and it's, it's gonna be a conversation that we have as we, as we start working with, with the landowners that haven't signed today.
The problem is you can't unding the bell. The bell's already been rung and so it's and that's why I say you've asked for these other amendments. Have you, has the new team discussed doing away with eminent domain? We have not at this point, but it's the absolute last resort. I mean, we, we have to put in the work as a team to try to build up our voluntary easements. And we know we've gotta do that. Hands down, it has to be done, so.
But so it's gonna get back to the landowners about darn near a year ago, I think, with their last final bid.
There is, there's no doubt that we have had some, some issues from the management standpoint in the past that, that we have to overcome. And part of the reason that there was a management change is because of that. And we're here to, we're gonna have to work with everyone. We can't undo what's been done. And all we're gonna do is, is try to roll out some, some new initiatives, some new thought processes and see if we can win some people back over. So that's our, it's our responsibility.
But if somebody's already signed, then you come up with better deals for the people that haven't.
From what I've read in the, in the letter that Joe sent out, they would be going back to those landowners that have already signed and, and offering these incentives also. That was my, am I misrepresenting that? Hundred percent sure.
Okay.
And this is just another reminder of bringing the bell when you came to our property on July twenty-third and announced with a boring machine and telling Wright County Sheriff that we had given permission. We had not. I mean, that bell was really long then.
Got a job ahead of us.
Dean touched on it. Probably the most important thing. Forget all the candy floating around in the room. The that's, that's excellent too. The, I've got enough stuff saved. I, I'm waiting for eminent domain myself because you guys have run a, you didn't ring a bell. You had ringing the bells like you can't believe. Lies and lies. Half of what you said this morning, I asked for and was told so many times, we can't do it. We can't do it. I'll take any amount of bet. You wanna put up, you'll never get a hundred percent without eminent domain. You will not get it. I know that. We've, I put way too much time. I got stuff on my phone from twenty-two from Mitch Vaughn, Bruce's own little right-hand man. What an arrogant, so he, I mean, I'm sorry, folks. And I told him, lay off. And he didn't, so eminent domain is the whole thing right there. You guys are these little trinkets out here, three hundred and thirty dollars a year for a quarter mile at eighty percent? That's a joke. An absolute joke.
To clarify, this is above and beyond what it would be a standard easement payment for, or.
Right, it's still a joke. If you wanna come back, anybody comes to my place, they better have a million bucks in their pocket, otherwise they can go straight through.
Yeah, your farm is the one that is, I, going diagonal across, what was it, a hundred and sixty acres?
No, it's just an eighty.
Isn't it eighty?
I just get simple. I, I want everything straight because your place is straight. Kivers is straight across his half mile. And I think this is the joke. We have some investments that pay us more than that every month.
I know that. I talked to some friends of ours that have a natural gas pipeline that was put in. And then five years later, because of the easement, they were able to put another line next to it. And that is over in I think the southern part of Hardin County. And, and they get an annual payment because of crop loss. And that was put in, I think in two thousand if I say I'm gonna be wrong, like somewhere around like two thousand twelve or something. And then five years later, it was more put in. And, and they've been getting annual payments because of crop loss. And is that what this? The, the voluntary easement and that, the annual payment is supposed to take care of? Or is just?
Well, first, we, we don't have dual line rights. So once we lay one pipeline, that's the only pipeline we can ever lay. Second, no, this, the annual payments is, is separate from crop damage. The first three years, we'll pay a hundred percent crop damage, then eighty, then sixty. And then following that, if you can prove continuous crop, crop loss beyond those three years, we'll continue to pay that on top of any of these incentives.
Okay.
Through the life of the pipeline on your property.
Okay. And is that no other lines? Is that as long as Summit Carbon Solution owns it? Or is that a whoever owns it?
Whoever owns it, it's in the verbiage of easement. And it can only run CO2.
Because unfortunately, it's too easy to sell the easements off, as we see with the navigator on.
Yeah, the.
We have no idea who's gonna own that pipeline.
Yep, you definitely have to go to the, the works that are running the easement.
Any other questions for?
As Bob said earlier, way back, we had asked on North Carson for a small change, just to miss on this eighty, which is pattern tiled. You are gonna cut twenty-six tile lines, which is a lot. And we had asked for a, a small change to move it just a bit. And again, going back, no, you could not make any changes. So it seems a little hypocritical that now you want to make changes and it's okay. Or, like you said, towards Nebraska, which sounds like you wanna go that way because South Dakota doesn't want the pipeline. So why is it okay for you to make changes in pipe size and location when we were told adamantly, no changes can be made?
That's a good point.
I can't speak directly to your property. I know I've, I've looked at, I know you have the two public drainage tiles on your property, is that correct?
Yes.
Oh, she's not even counting the sixteen-inchers that this guy does.
So I'm, I'm familiar specifically with your property. And I don't think it's fair to say on a blanket statement, we've made, we've made hundreds of changes based on landowner requests. Some of them are even shown in. hundreds of changes based on landowner requests, um, some of them are even shown in, in this amendment. Um, I spent a long time since I've looked specifically, I know Isaac, our construction manager, went out to you guys' property and took a look on, look at constructability. If we wanna revisit that and, and talk about where the pipeline's placed, we're so happy to do that.
Here's the line that Mitch Bond drew in my dining room.
The purple line?
That little red line all to the side.
Okay.
He said we could move it.
I'm sorry, I'm not, I'm not seeing it.
You're not seeing it? Right here, see that line right there? You'd miss all of the sub mains, you're still gonna cut the two sixteen. Guy, the guy stands in your living room and tells you that you could do, move this over. And then Manny or Isaac, and I got more pictures on here, these guys, when I told young Bill Sac, and I never, I know Bruce, I've known him for thirty years, I've never seen him surrounding himself with so many incompetent people. Your land agents and your engineers, they don't even know what they're talking about. I got it all right here. It's just amazing. They have no idea what they're talking about. Tile, they, these guys are all from Oklahoma and Texas and stuff, you should have recruited some local people to start with. You might have understood things a little better.
As I mentioned, if you wanna sit down and talk, I'm happy to.
Oh, there's no talking anymore, we'll see you in court, okay.
As a landowner, uh, money isn't the issue.
That's right.
It's property rights, the eminent domain is not right. You can give the county grants, you, whatever, but money is not the issue. It's eminent domain and money property rights.
There's a chat.
Yeah, the Courtney Morris, our drainage, uh, administrator was asking, it, has anybody at that level changed who she would interact with?
I believe she was already talking with Kaylee Langroll, her last name has changed to Gibson.
Okay.
Um, but I believe she'll remain as your contact. Um, and Courtney, I think you should have my contact information too, which I, I can always be the point, point of contact.
Yeah, okay.
But I think it was Kaylee previously, and it will still be Kaylee.
That sounds right.
Yeah.
Um, one of the other amendments that I'm still trying to dig through, uh, that you didn't discuss was concerning road right-of-ways. And I think it was, uh, asking to not have to abide by, um, by the county's road right-of-way, uh, regulations and road crossing regulations. Again, I'm, I don't wanna talk to it because I haven't, I don't understand the amendment yet. I mean, there was a lot of documentation that all of a sudden they dumped on IUC and on, and on everybody, so.
Yeah, uh, yeah.
Can you speak to that?
Yeah, so that wasn't particularly in the amendment, it was in the two-point-O docket. Um, a different county asked the IUC to weigh in on the regulation related to road crossings. This would have been in February of last year.
Correct.
So, I think last year, maybe over a year ago.
Correct.
Um, and we were asked to respond and we responded, and now we're waiting on the IUC to respond. So it wasn't something that we initiated or, or started, we did respond, um, at the request of IUC. And now it's on the IUC to further respond, but they, they haven't.
But concerning phase one?
It would, that would, I'm, I would assume it would be a blanket a- across, because it's just a further clarification of the regulation.
Yeah.
Um, and the two-point-O, we did say we were changing road crossings. Um, we just, where possible, tried to get to ninety degrees, set as many road crossings as we could. So that's where we were, we made some changes. Right, sometimes it's really hard, if there's a railroad going this way and a road going this way, to get to ninety is, is pretty challenging. Um, uh, but in situations where we could, we, we tried to true that up, just at, at the request of a lot of counties.
Any other questions? Get the letter from Summit. The names, return address. Houston postmark. I mean, that's pipeline people, you aren't making pipelines yet, you aren't even close to a pipeline.
I guess it was a large-scale mailing and we
Yeah, they didn't have anything to get from Ames that they could do a large-scale mailing, they got a post office, I'm sure. I mean, most everything we've got, and I think you look at the postmark from Texas. Why? If, if the headquarters is in Ames, it's really funny, everything's from Texas.
Where is the headquarters from?
Ames.
I'm running Research Park in Ames.
Is anybody there? That's where all the emergency stuff's gonna come from, supposedly. Yeah, but it looks like it's gonna be used in the
I guess to clarify, out of Ames, is, is the headquarters, is the, is the office people? Um, when we talk about people who are going to respond, who are gonna work on the pipeline on the day-to-day, they will work and live, um, in the area of the pipeline. Um, so Ames is, is where the, the office employees are currently based. Myself included.
Will there be, uh, um, public notices of, of these meetings? This, this page right here, the open house events?
I'm
Or is that only going to the landowners or?
The landowners will hear about it, I, I would have to ask Sabrina if she's gonna put it in the newspaper or not.
I'll probably give it to our newspapers here. Anything else?
Well, yeah, I got a question, would, would Summit have any interest in pursuing this project to begin with? For the forty-five Q, forty-five D-TAC credits, seems to me this whole, this whole entire project, this land grab is for federal subsidy-based profit. If, if those exist, if those change, do they still pursue this?
I think the, the reason behind the project is our ethanol plants wanting to compete in the, in the future, in what energy looks like going into the future. And what it looks like is competing in those low-carbon markets, they didn't create the markets, um, but they need to compete in them. And that's what, that, that is what initially founded this project. It drops their carbon intensity score low enough that they can sell into these massive low-carbon markets, um, that they qualify for sustainable aviation fuel, that they qualify to have a seat at the table when we talk about energy as we move into the future, um, which is just incredibly important to the state of Iowa, um, to have ethanol plants continue to use fifty percent of the corn grown in the state.
So, uh, to that, I'd say Iowa farmers are undoubtedly the most practical and, and the most land conserve, what, land conservation or conservation, we do, we go above and beyond everything we do. Watching my seventy-three-year-old dad and I have to change our practices and our farming practices, does just to sell sustainable aviation fuel. This doesn't seem logical.
Again, we didn't build the regulation. Um, we are helping the ethanol plants adapt to it, um, as they, as, you know, the farming industry has adapted for a hundred years, um, on demand and where the demand is, um, and ethanol plants are just continuing to follow that. We didn't, we didn't build the regulation.
Would, but would it be remotely logical or profitable for you to pursue this project if it wasn't for federal subsidies?
Um, I believe, you know, the assumption is a twelve-year tax credit. Um, our plan is to run the pipeline and be profitable along following that. They, the federal government, the government through years has funded tax credits in the same way they funded the ethanol plants being built twenty-five years ago, because it takes a large capital investment. And you have to have proof that you pay that capital investment back to a vendor. And the forty-five Q was built as proof you could pay back the large capital investment. But you still have to be able to stand on your own two feet and survive once that ends, and that's our plan.
Actually, I think the forty-five Q was built around the, the green movement, um, because the, it doesn't change the ethanol that's produced at, or an LP. What goes in those tank cars and is shipped out of here, it only allows us to say to California and to the other states, we're capturing carbon, therefore you buy our ethanol. Um, but it's the same ethanol, it's not a lower, um, it's smoke and mirrors to me. But I know that you're not here to, to discuss, and I apologize for going
Seven percent of the ethanol built in Iowa, or made in Iowa, is consumed in Iowa. There is no choice but to go out and sell another.
But those markets are getting smaller. California is trying to get rid of combustion engines. So the market isn't there long-term.
That's
And Bruce Rastetter is selling low-carbon ethanol into Texas from Brazil.
I guess.
Because he's burning crop waste instead of natural gas. Which corn LP could do? It could burn, if it burned shelled corn rather than natural gas, it would reduce its carbon footprint.
There's, I guess, two things that you said there, first, you're correct, the markets are getting smaller. California, the market is getting smaller. Third, so what ethanol plants have to do is find a new market, and that new market are things like sustainable aviation fuel. It's expand the market based on demand. And, and as demand decreases, corn isn't getting less productive, you're getting more productive every year, and we gotta find an outlet to use that corn. That's what the ethanol plants are working towards.
Uh, we're both, Kylie and, and Mike, um, so not fully understanding the amendment that's asked for the right-of-way crossings. Does Summit Carbon Solutions plan to voluntarily comply with our right-of-way crossings uh, as they are currently written and as you have had them shown before? Or are you asking to be able to not observe those regulations?
I think further discussion's gonna take place, which is started with Adam and walking down on the route and what it looks like and where in situations it might push us closer to a house, where it might, um, push us in the middle of someone's farm field and conversations like that need to continue.
So is that a?
And I'm, I can't blankly say yes.
Correct, Mike?
I think we, we have to look at each crossing and, and, and do our best to follow the, the local ordinances based on what that crossing, you know, what, what issues may be there. Some of them are very simple, some of them may not be.
Any other questions?
Did you get an answer?
All right, I got an answer that, that the answer was not a yes or a no.
Then they'll sue you. That's, that's her favorite trick, we'll sue you.
I do have one question, I guess, if, um, a landowner were to sell their property that you have already signed the easement on, what happens to the new landowner? If the new landowner is not okay with the easement that was signed, since it's under your ownership now?
The easement runs with the land. Similar to if the pipe, you buy a land that has pipe in the ground. Um, when you, you know, get the documentation of ownership, you get the easement.
Gotcha. I didn't, yeah.
Anything else? Thank you for coming. Thank you to all of you for coming.
You rang your bell, right here, Bill.
Thank you.
Thank you, nice to meet you, Mike.
Okay, number six, review and act on the agreement between Wright County and Community and Family Resources regarding the use of opioid funds. Sandy, do you wanna discuss this?
So, um, prior to, oh, I can't tell you the exact dates on that two thousand and fifteen or sixteen, there was a block grant that CFR was able to use to pay for, um, somebody who required treatment and didn't have insurance or a way to pay for that, so that they, you know, everybody would get treatment, and that's what we want, is everybody to get treatment. Um, with the new ASO and the behavioral health, that, um, ASAM three-point-seven that requires somebody have inpatient, um, treatment and no longer pays for it. So the CFR requested to go back to that old agreement on that the county would pay for that, um, before, I think last year's use was like eighteen hundred dollars, as they indicated. So the discussion was, okay, we have opioid dollars. And then we have to also look at that, a lot of times that treatment is maybe not opioid, might be meth, might be, you know, other, um, substances, even alcohol. Um, again, the opioid dollars are very specific. So they could pay for someone who required opioid inpatient treatment. However, that leaves that piece of, it's meth, if it's, you know, alcohol, how is that paid for? So this agreement is basically saying, yes, the county will, you have Department Twenty-Six, it's not under my purview, it's under your agency's purview that, uh, is budgeted for, that I believe is been used in the past for that, along with maybe transportation. Sheriff Department uses it maybe for transportation, so, um, this is the basic agreement that says, yes, the county will get somebody, I should say treatment, I'm talking detox. I can say detox, you know, when I'm saying treatment, detox, someone who needs inpatient detox. Um, so that's what the agreement is, is to go back to that previous agreement. Prior to the block grant, being able to pay for, CFR was able, had extra dollars, they don't have anymore, so.
Right, so they're going out to each county, um, and asking for this agreement that the county would be willing to pay for that detox. Um, again, as Sandy said, the opioid dollars are very specific, if it's opioid-related, uh, we can use those funds. The state has opened up the, for CFR to build these detox centers and allows them to use opioid funds, uh, to the tune of like three million dollars, uh, this last legislative, uh, session, um, towards a new detox center. That detox center also deals with alcohol, uh, methamphetamines, uh, other, uh, substance, um, detoxification. But for us to use our opioid dollars, it needs to be specific opioid detox. Otherwise, it comes out of this Fund Twenty-Six.
It's only about a fifteen percent gray area in there, rest of the eighty, eighty-five percent needs to be specific to that. And there is, I mean, it isn't just, yes, we'll do that, there is documents every year that have to be. So all of those opioid dollars, class action dollars, fifty percent of it goes to the state and then the other fifty percent is split down through the counties. So, they may be funding, yes.
Right.
Um, so.
But the state doesn't report to the same people that we report to.
Yeah, our Attorney General is who, who is like the watchdog over how this is used. So I'm just very, very careful, because I don't wanna sit anywhere trying to explain.
And Sandy and I had a, a Zoom meeting with, uh, Michelle Delariva, who was the, um, CEO of CFR. Um, specifically addressing these issues, um, and addressing the fact that they do exhaust all insurance, I mean, every other payment, possible payment source, uh, we would be a last resort. Again, last year, uh
Is eighteen hundred.
One thousand eight eight hundred dollars.
Do you have a copy of that agreement? We don't, I don't have a copy of that agreement.
I did get one.
Did you get one?
I can, I I can send it out, run through Eric and then I'll send it back out to you.
Do you like table it until you see that?
Yes, please. Um, it's it's just, um, I don't know, you know, what type of agreement it is, because on the agenda it says agreement between Wright County Community and Family Resources regarding the use of opioid funds.
Okay.
And so if it's concerning, we can't use it for detox, then we use taxpayer dollars, but if we if it's going to be used for opioids and drug addiction and things like that. I that I would like to use as much of the opioid funds as possible, so yes, I'd like to.
That was, that was the root of our discussion.
Yeah, okay, good.
Opioid, we can use it if it's alcohol.
And I would think Michelle would be able to, I mean, they can identify that.
Absolutely, yes, and their their building will be specific.
That's exactly what we asked, is not to have just a blanket all that goes to opioid, they need to be able to tease out what is specific, what is, I don't need names, numbers, any other, but just if you're going to ask me to pay the same, what you need to tell me what.
Correct, you're correct, okay. Well, we asked Eric, we we emailed the agreement to Eric and he didn't think there was anything wrong with it.
Okay.
Well, we can get it, so uh there there wasn't a deadline date uh that I recall. It wasn't time critical.
And I'm sorry, I didn't realize you guys didn't have it, I apologize for that.
Well, I'll take the blame on that, I I probably should have shared it with the other supervisor. But I would make a motion to table item number seven uh until next week.
Six.
Six. Excuse me, six, yes, I'm sorry.
Okay.
We have a motion to table six till next week, we have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All ayes. Hey, review and act on tax suspension order twelve twenty eight for the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six tax per code four twenty seven point nine for a parcel located in Dallas.
Uh, this gentleman's daughter came in and presented the letter that you guys received to suspend his taxes for this year.
And all of the proper documentation is there, correct?
Yeah.
And this is per social security and and SSI, and um I make a motion to approve uh the tax suspension. Now, this does not make the taxes go away, it's like if they just can't, don't have the funds to pay it today. But uh if the house is sold, which uh from what they said it was up for sale, I think that was the sign.
Yeah.
Yeah, reimbursed for it.
Yeah, then then they have to get the catches, have them be caught up.
Good, just you need to sign this, thank you. We have a motion on the floor, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
All ayes. Thank you. Adam?
Just an update today, uh priority three blade, new territories were rolled out since we went from eleven blade operators to ten. Um trucks were hauling year run gravel, we did complete the year run gravel, one hundred and twenty two segments, twenty three thousand tons were put out on that. Um, they are, they were doing spot rocking last week just to catch up on some spots from the rain. Um, then they'll be working on our uh limestone that we haul to the gravel roads for the gravel next year. So those routes will be starting here soon. Ten work orders were uh completed, uh this latest updates, the lost Corey Bridge guardrails expected this week, I sent you all a text message, uh very uh didn't really want to send you it, but I sent you it, uh Taylor Avenue Bridge, they poured the other three encasements. Um, they, I have requested a schedule from the contractor since they were thirty days in out of a sixty day contract and only had six, six encasements uh poured. Uh, so I said, hey, I want to see a schedule that puts you to the end of the contract um and where that's at. So they submitted that on Friday and they're making other adjustments, trying to get more people and bringing another crane in, so they're they're making headway, it's we're gonna have to monitor that one as close as possible.
How many, how many more did they have to pour?
Uh, well, they got to pour six encasements on the other side, but then they have to drive four abutment pile on south, four abutment pile on the north, pour an abutment, pour an abutment and then form up the whole entire bridge and pour that.
In thirty days.
In thirty days.
Wow.
Now, thirty working days, okay?
Yeah.
So thirty working days is is and some days we may not charge because it could be too wet, it could be, you know, so they still have to bring in all the riprap for the berm underneath. So it's going to be tight, um there's a thousand dollar liquidated damages uh per day over um that we will have to, if if we need to, we will put in in place, we have to do a change order to do that, which opens up negotiations, obviously, so. The Hancock paving, they've done the surface lift for fifteen miles on the kind of the eastbound on uh was Hancock was already done, but the north lane is already done all the way to Highway sixty nine. Um, they're working on the south lane or the westbound, uh the eastbound lane, but going west. Um, they have done, they will come back and do the run outs on County K, just because it's so busy with a different crew. So they'll be doing that afterwards, but they've done the run out um on pretty much every other gravel road, the the radius on sixty nine. When they're done, they'll do that east one also, so probably with that crew that's coming in to do.
Even even as it's ground down, it's so much smoother than.
Yeah, yeah, it'll be a hundred percent better than it was, probably a thousand percent better.
Yeah.
Um seismic testing, they did give me an update on the on nine twenty five of their uh uh of their update, sorry, why does it say twenty twenty two, but should say twenty twenty five. Um, they uh had to move a route, one of their their engineers told the uh seismic testing people that they wanted them to do this route uh over there, so if you, I think it was, I want, I want to say one hundred ninetieth from Franklin to Youngblood, I do believe, so.
They're working on that right now.
Yeah, they're working on that right now, so um.
Why did they change it?
Uh, because they were, I guess they were seeing something that they wanted to get more information, that's what, oh, is it? Yeah, so that's what my understanding is, is that the when they're changing that type of stuff inside of that, it might have been a situation where they've done their not deep dive into the the data, but they said, okay, there's an anomaly, we want you to do this one first because we don't. Yeah, that's my understanding of the the limited understanding of this. So uh the other thing I didn't put on here was the Victor Avenue uh Bridge that's north of Rowan, um they have the bridge taken out already. Uh, the guys are out um setting alignment this morning for the box to be set this week. So when they get that done, they'll backfill it and it should be open soon after then, so.
It's all internal, right?
No, that is a contract, that's a PCI also, so. Um, and then the guys finished up the night drive last week uh on the south half. Any questions?
Are the, are the guardrail guys there this morning?
I will confirm that this morning when I drive.
Okay, thank you.
Not going to uh get your hopes up, so. Oh, I would rather have you smile than frown when I send you a text, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Adam. Any old business? Any new business? Update on meetings.
I had DKA on Wednesday and Sandy and I are going to be discussing, they have some excess funds that they need to figure out what to do by by the end of FY twenty six. Let's see if we can spend some of those here.
I had a mo Tuesday night and I had central auto detention Friday. There will be a release coming out because our head guy Tony did leave. Yeah, but I can't say anymore till we get told what to say.
And you had emergency management.
Yeah, yeah, we're not doing the building at this time, we're gonna wait a year on it. And we're gonna look into changing it, the what was that, we're gonna change it to the uh how we get money for it, uh.
Oh, the grant?
Oh, well, she was talking about a levy.
Yes.
She wanted to do it as a a levy. Um, and I did talk to the Winnisheet County Emergency Management Coordinator, Sean Snyder. Um, I called him and talked to him for a while because she had mentioned Winnisheet County does this. Um, I also spoke to the county auditor Ben Steinis um up in Winnisheet County and and what it is, is it is uh a levy per Iowa Code section twenty nine C point one seven seventeen, um when they were talking about doing a special levy and and I said that there is, Iowa Code doesn't allow for a special levy for emergency management. And he was calling the special levy general supplemental, and so you you would levy under general supplemental and not uh do a per capita like they're currently doing and or voluntary with our cities in and helping pay for emergency management. And there's, there's four different, I think there's five, and I wrote down the general supplemental, you can do it per capita. You can figure out the total assessed value of the cities, you know, you know, as per valuation sheets. Um, and then do a let, not a levy, but an assessment to per the assessed value, like prorated out. Um, or you can have each community voluntarily give to um emergency management, and then there was a fifth one and I didn't write that one down. So, um, the, I need to look and and pull up the levy sheets or the, yeah, the levy sheets for the cities. I believe like the city of Eagle Grove does levy uh for EMS uh communicating what they donate to communication and emergency management. Um, and I think that's the only city that does that. Yeah, so uh that might be, and according to the Sean Snyder, he said that um House File seven eighteen, which does limitations on the county and the cities. Um, that 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 levy for emergency management EMS does not affect the 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 laws and the limitations on House File seven eighteen. So I need to research that a little bit more, but um there is not uh and she said then she would not have to bill anything, the money would just show up in her fund and that's the, she will still have the invoice, if she did the levy, she would still have to invoice, give an invoice to Amanda and then and then Amanda would write the check to put it into her fund. It doesn't automatically just go into her fund, so.
And we did talk to our some of the uh mayors that were there raising what they're giving. Release, put the word out that they could be possibly getting more or giving us more than.
Increasing the amount of their contribution towards emergency management.
Yeah. All I had. Anybody else?
I'd like us on Wednesday, Thursday, I have the Boone River Water Ship Management Authority uh in the afternoon and then CFR.
Any else before the board?
Yes, there was an email and I didn't mark it as to save it, but it was on the uh Central Island Juvenile Detention uh the resolution that we.
Yes, the last resolution we did was for the lawsuit, we have a new one coming out, we will be doing as a member.
Okay, but there was something and I I'll look for it, but it was like they did not receive that. Okay.
And I sent it to them.
Okay. Oh, okay, yeah, so it wasn't Central Island. Okay, my number one, I know some for names here and it's like I'm not.
No, that was the ISF one that was done in August.
Okay, gotcha, perfect, thank you.
Anything else for the board?
What's to adjourn?
Do we have a second?
Second, please.
All in favor?
Aye.
All ayes, we'll be in recess till Bernie comes down.
Yeah.
Then I'll be in recess for five minutes before we uh convene as our drainage trustees. Like to call this meeting to order for the as drainage trustees. Get my agenda here, I need approval of the tentative agenda, please.
Don't move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All ayes. Would you read the minutes of the previous meeting, please?
Yes, last meeting was September twenty second, twenty twenty five. The Wright County Board Supervisors met in regular session as trustees of the drainage districts with the following members present. Rasmussen, Cluse, Luke's, Bosch via Zoom and Ellis, also present were Courtney Morris, Drainage Administrator and Amanda Meyer Auditor. Other interested parties were Robert Watts, Caleb Britton and Robert Ritter, all via Zoom and Kevin Lerman. Chairman Rasmussen called the meeting to order at nine twenty three AM. Motion by Cluse and seconded by Luke's to approve the tentative agenda, motion carried. Minutes of the previous meeting on September fifteenth, twenty twenty five were read and approved. There were no drainage plans for payment needing approval. There was one work order that was reviewed and approved for DD one twenty five dash fifty four or one twenty one dash fifty four in section ten of Norwood Township for a blowout. Morris presented the following drainage invoice for CGA for DD sixty two and the amount of six hundred dollars. A conference call with Humboldt County Trustees was held to receive petition for new main and joint drainage district one sixty two dash seven and appoint an engineer. Present on conference call were Humboldt County Supervisors Bruce Reimers, Sandy Looney, Looney, Bob Rasmussen and Mike Carpenter and Terry Stuffelbein, Drainage Administrator. Wright County Chairman Rasmussen called the joint meeting to order. Um, Morris explained the petition was placed back on the agenda due to last week's agenda for Humboldt and Wright County not stating to receive the petition and appoint an engineer. Morris also shared that the drainage district was established in nineteen sixteen, there are roughly one thousand one hundred and twenty one point zero five acres in the district with nine hundred and sixteen point zero three acres being in Wright County and two hundred and five point zero two acres being in Humboldt County. The current main is roughly nine thousand seven hundred and sixteen feet long. Motion by Humboldt County Reimers and seconded by Wright County Cluse to receive the petition for new main and joint drainage district one sixty two dash seven and appoint Jacobson, Westergarden Associates as the engineer, motion carried. Wright County Chairman Rasmussen adjourned the joint meeting. Able discussion from July twenty eighth, twenty twenty five on reclassification petition for DD one ninety four lateral one B began. Morris read aloud the response received from the drainage attorney containing his opinion on the matter. The opinion can be summed up that Mr. Lerman does not raise a legal issue, the board has wide discretion as to how they want to proceed. Mr. Lerman's argument uh would render drainage districts unworkable as virtually all landowners are assessed for portions of ditches and tiles located upstream of their land and it is too late to challenge that now. Lerman discussed his concern and showed on the map where his property lies. Motion by Cluse and seconded by Ellis to deny the petition for reclassification of DD one ninety four lateral one B, motion carried. Motion by Cluse and seconded by Luke's to adjourn the meeting, motion carried.
Any additions or corrections? If none, they stand approved as read. Any drainage claims?
We just have the one claim for CGA and the amount of six hundred dollars that was presented last week.
And we signed it.
Yep. Open forum to the public, anybody on Zoom or?
Do we have to approve drainage claims?
We approved it last week, didn't we?
Being approved the invoice last week.
Got you.
That avoided.
I'm like.
Yeah, not not used to the change yet, okay.
Okay, review and act on drainage work orders, which I didn't see any.
No work orders.
Review and sign any open, open drainage invoices.
We have nine invoices. Uh, the first one is for postage for thirty dollars and thirty four cents. This is postage for DD sixty two for sending out forty one uh quote recut letters to contractors. Um, Rysol Excavating has contacted us and has been sent the packet and Larry Mozgan has been in this morning asking for that and he'll be back in later, those are the two so far.
Good deal.
Um, the next ones, yes, the next ones are all for Brush and We Control. So we've got first one for Joey Hara for DD four lateral one and the amount of two hundred and fifty dollars and his estimate was two hundred and fifty. The next one is for DD two sixteen and the amount of two hundred and fifty dollars and his estimate was also two hundred and fifty dollars. The next one is DD one eleven dash three, which is with Franklin County and is for seven hundred and fifty dollars, his estimate was eight hundred and fifty. Uh, the next one is for DD sixty two, his amount was one thousand seven hundred dollars and his estimate was one thousand seven hundred dollars. The next one is for DD sixty-two, his amount was one thousand seven hundred dollars and his estimate was one thousand seven hundred dollars.
The DD sixty-two, is that like the bottom half of that? Ditch.
I'll have to check with him if he took care of that and to what extent. Because I'm sure he didn't take care of all of it with how far out that brush did go. That will check in and make sure that we have that.
Yeah, I think there's a fence line along. One portion, I'm certainly probably leaving going to the fence line.
And the next one is for DD forty-nine dash ninety lateral A, this is with Webster County. The amount was for two hundred and fifty dollars, his estimate was for two hundred and fifty dollars. Next one is for DD eleven and the amount of one thousand dollars, his estimate was a thousand dollars. The next one is for DD eighteen and the amount of eight hundred dollars, his estimate was eight hundred. And the last one is for DD thirteen and the amount of one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars and his estimate was one thousand three hundred and fifty dollars. Not all of the invoices for today.
Motion to approve the
You don't have to, you do it when the claims.
Never ever going to do that.
I'm not either.
I'll just remind you, it's okay. That is all I have for you.
Anything else before the board?
Motion to adjourn as drainage trustees.
All in favor? All eyes. Thank you, Courtney. Thank you, Amanda.